Welcome to the City Club of Eugene's March 18, 2022 Program. Eugene City Council Ward Four Candidate Forum. This is the 24th program in our 2021-22 programming year. My name's Kitty Piercy and I'm the City Club President and proud of it. Support for the City Club is provided by our members and sponsors. You can become a member of the City Club at our website, cityclubofeugene.org. This program is live streamed to our YouTube channel and archived there and on our Facebook page. Our podcast is available wherever you listen to podcasts. Programs are broadcast on Public Radio Station KLCC on Monday nights at 7:00. We have both business and in-kind sponsors. Our diamond sponsors are Kaiser Permanente, University of Oregon, Peace Health, and Lane Community College. And we get generous support from the City of Eugene and from Lane County. Our format today includes a question and answer. No, it doesn't. We're doing, we're not doing the question and answer format.
We are doing the Q and A format.
Okay. All right. Our format today includes a question and answer period with club members and non-members alike via live stream and text. The next number, the texting number to submit your question will appear at the bottom of your screen during the intermission and the question and answer segment. Speakers for today's program are Eugene City Council Ward Four Candidate Forum are Jennifer Solomon, Director of Philanthropy at Relief Nursery, and City Councilor Jennifer Ye. Biographical information on our speakers is available on our website, cityclubofeugene.org. I'd like to thank Joel Korn for coordinating today's program. Oregon's Spring Election Day is May 17, but it's not just in a primary election in Eugene. The nonpartisan city council elections in May are more impactful than partisan elections that pick only one party's candidate. If one candidate in the city council elections gets more than 50% of the vote, the race is over. That person gets sworn in in January. This year challenger and former councillor Jennifer Solomon faces incumbent Jennifer Ye to represent Ward Four, which is roughly north of Franklin and runs north and east to the city borders. Our program today will be moderated by KLCC's Brian Bull, who will introduce today's speakers. Brian?
Thank you very much, Kitty. I'll give a very brief bio of the candidates. And our incumbent is Jennifer Ye, who has represented Ward Four on the Eugene City Council since 2017. Before running for city council, she was a Harlow neighborhood activist for 10 years. As a city councillor, Jennifer continues to be an advocate for her community, focusing on issues like affordable housing, public safety, and climate change. In Jennifer's professional life, she works for the Lane County Historical Society and serves as a board member of the Lane County Cultural Coalition. She earned a BA in English and Psychology from the University of Oregon. Her challenger is Jennifer Solomon, who currently serves as the Director of Philanthropy at Relief Nursery, a local organization dedicated to strengthening families and keeping children safe. She also is a former Eugene City councillor, having served the residents of the Bethel area from 2003 to 2010. Before joining the city council, she was a public relations professional and an intern for Mark O. Hatfield. She earned a degree in journalism, also from the University of Oregon. Before we jump in, I just want to go over some rules here for the forum, as dictated by the City Club of Eugene. The rules for the City Council Ward Four Candidates Forum for today. First off, substitutes or stand-ins for the candidates will not be allowed. Two, to preserve a nonpartisan atmosphere during the forum, no campaign banners, signs, or other campaign paraphernalia will be allowed, including on the candidate's person. Three, campaign literature may be placed on the designated table before the meeting in the back of the room. Four, candidates should arrive before, oh, actually, they've already done that, never mind. Time limits. Each speaker will get a three-minute opening statement. I've already flipped a coin and randomized that order. We'll go first with Jennifer Solomon. And then each speaker will get one minute to answer questions. And at the end, each speaker will get three minutes also for a closing statement. We'll have a timekeeper keeping everything on track and we will wrap up near the top of the hour. So as mentioned just a moment ago, we will have a three-minute opening statement from challenger Jennifer Solomon.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, just a little bit louder.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. This is actually my third time presenting to City Club. I really appreciate your organization's work in building community vision and dialogue. As previously mentioned, I had the privilege of representing the awesome residents of the Bethel-Danabow area from 2003 to 2010, and I'm proud of what we accomplished during that time. To the question of why I'm running for city council, I naturally gravitate toward issues of governance. What should a city provide? What shouldn't a city provide? How we partner with other organizations to better deliver services? And how we support our businesses and citizens so that they can thrive? Certainly, broad public outreach and feedback is an essential component of those discussions, and even more so when we are making large public investments. Our citizens deserve to know exactly what they are getting for those investments. What outcomes do we want or need? And it's a councillor's role to communicate that effectively to the citizens. I retired from council after two terms so that I could be present with our two boys. They are now at Oregon State University. Go Beavers! And I find myself paying attention to what is going on at council. I honestly don't feel our ward's values are represented at city council. And this sentiment is echoed every time I talk with my neighbors. People are very frustrated and they don't believe their concerns are being addressed. It's time for a change, and I want to be that change. I'm focused on the local issues, I'm responsive, I'm thoughtful in deliberating issues, and I'm experienced, so I'm able to hit the ground running. Lastly, in my door-to-door campaigning, I can tell you that hands down, the number one issue that concerns residents is public safety. And this closely aligns with the second most concerning issue, which is homelessness. Housing affordability is third. Those are the issues on which I want to focus, and those are the issues that matter to Ward Four. And I look forward to the opportunity to be their voice.
All right. Thank you very much. And Jennifer Ye, your three-minute opening statement.
First, thank you to the City Club of Eugene and KLCC. I'm Jennifer Ye, and I'm running for reelection to continue to advocate for the same issues and people that propelled me to run for city council in 2017. But my journey began long before then. When I moved to Eugene 30 years ago as a student, it immediately felt like home. People cared about the environment and their neighbors, and they weren't afraid to be a little different. Eugene was and is a wonderful place for children, and I've raised both of my kids here. My daughter currently attends Sheldon High School. I began volunteering in my neighborhood almost two decades ago, and it was that experience that taught me how much potential our city has and how valuable our neighbors are. But part of our collective story wasn't being told because some of our voices were not being heard, and I wanted to change that. In the years since, we have gotten better at listening to the marginalized and often forgotten members of our community, but we still have to do more. And as we have made progress in some areas, other new challenges have tested our will and commitment to each other. Some may see these as challenges to overcome, but I see these as opportunities to learn from. I've helped lead our city through the effects of a worldwide pandemic, strongly supported frontline workers, and channeled support to their police department. Because as a police commissioner, I know our police need more resources to do the community policing that they want to do. That's why I supported long-term funding to bolster our police and first-time responders, but always remembering those folks in our community who feel unseen and unheard. Our shared future requires us to partner with the county, state, and federal governments on holistic solutions to address truly nationwide problems. And I'm going to talk about three. First, as caputs has risen to the model for alternative policing, I have fought to secure funding that expanded their hours of operation, but we need to increase our investment in mental health crisis facing, the mental health crisis facing our community. Second, while we wait for others to address the climate, to address climate change, I'm proud of what I've contributed to the Climate Action Plan that thrust Eugene into a leadership position. And lastly, Eugene needs more housing. Our limited supply and options are not serving the needs of our residents. That's why I supported actions like increasing affordable housing supply and diversifying our options like ADUs. It's been the honor of my life to serve all of you. By working together, we can create a better community for everyone who calls Eugene home.
Thank you both for your opening statements. And as Kitty Piercy mentioned at the top of the program, there is a text address that you can use to send in questions for the candidates. And we also have questions prepared for both here that I'll begin with. And we will randomize the order, beginning with incumbent Jennifer Ye. First off, Jennifer, why do you deserve another term?
That's an excellent question. You know, for my first term, being a city councillor, you know, my experience was really just with my neighborhood association and advocating for, you know, at a grassroots level to get stuff done in our community. But now, after I've been a city councillor for a term, I've been able to build those relationships and build that experience to be able to advocate for the priorities that people in North Eugene really care about. I'm a hard-working representative. I do my homework, and I show up prepared and ready to collaborate and get stuff done. I'm not afraid to make bold decisions, and that will not change in a next term.
And turning to Jennifer Solomon, the challenger, what do you think you can do for Ward Four that the incumbent can't?
I also bring great collaboration to the table. I have years of experience in this community, and I reach out to the citizens. I'm responsive, I'm focused, and I also, yes, will come prepared and ready to collaborate and do the research and be the city councillor that the residents of Ward Four deserve.
Next question. Now, you've both served on city councils. Starting with you, Jennifer Solomon, what do you consider your proudest achievement?
Oh, sure. Thank you. I appreciate that question. When I previously served on city council, about two and a half years into my first term, an unthinkable tragedy had occurred in the ward when two cousins drowned in the Golden Gardens Pond. And it wasn't the first time that children had died there. So I talked with the family, and they really wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to happen again. And so I introduced them to the active Bethel citizens. The active Bethel citizens wrapped their arms around this family, and together they all came to council and advocated for money to improve the ponds so that they would be more safe for the neighborhood. And then they advocated to budget committee. And both budget committee and city council approved those expenditures. And I'm happy to report that four years later, the park was opened, reopened, and it's safe and it's configured. There's lighting and pathways, and the pond sides have been sloped so that they're much safer. And it was a great addition, and it was a great process to be a part of.
All right. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we limit all the answers to one minute. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And Jennifer Ye, looking back at your career as a city councillor to date, what do you consider your proudest achievement?
Yeah, thank you. There's a lot of things that I'm proud of, being a city councillor representing Northeast Eugene. But I think the thing that really comes to mind first off is all the times that I've voted to support safe places for people to live. We have so many people in our community who are really struggling, and many of them are living in their cars or in a tent, or they might be living on a friend's couch, but that's not a safe and stable place to be successful. And so our rest stops, our micro sites, our dawn-to-dawn, our safe sleep sites, it gives people hope that their lives can be better and they can be stable and have a happy life like I get to enjoy in North Eugene. That's what I want for them as well. So that's what I'm most proud of.
All right. And now we're going to flip that question a bit, and starting again with Jennifer Solomon. Looking back at your career as a councillor, a city councillor, what do you consider your greatest failure or setback?
I think probably the most disappointing thing that happened was when the West Eugene Parkway was not advanced, and that project died forever. And that was really frustrating. Many years of work had gone into that project, and it just didn't have the majority of council support, and so it didn't proceed. And I feel that was really unfortunate for the citizens of West Eugene and all the people that use the Belt Line and need to get in and out of West Eugene safely.
All right. And Jennifer Ye, what do you consider your greatest failure or setback?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that question because I think it's important that we acknowledge when we make mistakes, because we're all human, and it happens. I would say the one thing I'm regretful about my time on city council was not supporting HB 2001 when it was at the state level. I can see now that these measures and these zone changes are going to do the things in our community that are important to me, which is making more housing. And I wish I had supported it more enthusiastically when it was at the city, when it was at the council table, and we were voting for whether or not to support the bill as it went through our state legislature. So, but I, you know, it was a good experience, and I learned from that experience to do your research, talk to people, make sure you know what's, all the different nuances of a subject. And so it ultimately was a good experience, and I learned from it.
All right. Thank you. Now, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a major economic upheaval since 2020. I was just following along the annual economic summit with the Eugene Chamber of Commerce this week, and a lot of business owners and city officials were talking about just the recovery effort and just the impact that the pandemic has had on the local economy. How will you help businesses recover and help employment in the coming term? And Jennifer Ye, we'll start with you.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm an incoming ED at the Historical Society, and, you know, pandemic was tough. We had, just like many businesses, nonprofits were affected as well, and it was a difficult time, and things are starting to get better. But one of the problems that we're seeing in our community is getting employees. I think one of the really great things that cities can do is create a good stage, right? Set the stage so that employees want to come to Eugene. So that means ensuring there's affordable housing, making sure that there's transportation options that work for people. You know, things like parks and green space matter to people when they're trying to decide where they want to go to work. And we can set that stage for businesses, for them to be able to attract those employees that will get them back on track, that they may have lost during the pandemic. I think that's one lever that is really good for city governments.
All right. And same question to you, Jennifer Solomon, regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and its effects on the economy. How will you help businesses recover and employment?
I would be open to exploring any type of incentives that would attract employers to this area. And I also believe that public safety would be an essential component of that, especially if we're looking to employers to come downtown. Their employees want to be safe, and I think that's important for us to provide for those employers. And it is true, transportation would be an essential issue as well, especially in our West Eugene neighborhoods where there's more of the industrial and commercial complexes. And then finally, I just would absolutely not support any new taxes to fund any of these incentives for employers. That just is a nonstarter, and that would just be devastating to many of the businesses downtown.
All right. While COVID-19 appears to be on the decline, there always remains the possibility of new pandemics or variants that can cause a spike in case numbers. And starting with you, Jennifer Solomon, what do you think the City of Eugene can do to safeguard against future pandemic emergencies?
Well, I think that we've learned a lot during this pandemic about what can be done. So we have a lot of systems in place, or if we needed to reengage those systems, I don't think it would be very difficult. I think people have learned how to take care of themselves, and that would, I'm not sure really what the city's role is in that. There's just been so many different impacts, I'm not really sure how the city could prepare our community for another one that we haven't already learned during this one.
All right. And Jennifer Ye, the same question here in regards to the possibility of future outbreaks, pandemics, or variants. What do you think the City of Eugene can do to help safeguard and offset any future emergencies?
Yeah, so, you know, we all hope that this pandemic is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. But if we think beyond just pandemics, we also know that there's a lot of other types of crises that could happen to our community, earthquakes, floods, these all, they're all similar in one way, and that's that the city has to be ready to respond to them. We've learned a lot during this pandemic, and we've created processes and collaborations with our other partners in the community, and we've been able to pivot and do what we need to do as a city. But we need to continue that. Staff change. We need to ensure that we're, that that knowledge that we have gained is passed on to new employees, new people that come to the city, so that we're resilient. So no matter what the crisis is, maybe it's a new variant, maybe it's an earthquake, it doesn't matter. We're ready with the resources and the people and the skills to address it quickly and effectively. And we've done that with this, and we can do it with other ones.
All right. Homelessness was a huge problem before COVID-19, and the pandemic has only worsened that issue. As an elected city councillor, what do you think can be done to address the needs of the unhoused across Ward Four and the city overall? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Ye.
Yeah, thank you. So first, we need to remember homelessness is not only a Eugene problem, right? This is a national problem. There's no quick fix, there's no silver bullet to solving this problem, but there are some concrete things that we can do. The first one is, we need to have more housing. You know, that's why I've supported affordable housing complexes, emergency housing, and, you know, reforming our zoning so we can get more housing options and diversity of housing into our community. The second thing is, we need to double down on mental health, addiction services, and job training. Because once someone gets into a stable home, they need those wraparound services so that they can succeed. And that's why I will continue to support affordable housing, and I will continue to support these mental health, addiction services, you know, any way we can to help people, some of them in Northeast Eugene, get into that better place in their lives. And then they're, then they're our neighbors, they're contributing to our economy and to our lives, and that's what we need.
All right. And Jennifer Solomon, just a quick repeat of the question again. Homelessness, again, the pandemic has worsened the problem. As elected city councillor, what do you think could be done to address the needs of the unhoused across Ward Four and the City of Eugene?
Well, the homeless crisis is front and center every day, and there isn't one solution. There are multiple strategies for the different populations involved. And before we can craft any solutions, we absolutely need good data, and with good data, then we can craft solutions and make investments. But any investments must be accompanied by outcomes, and I don't feel like we are identifying the outcomes that we want before we make these investments. I mean, how can we measure efficiency? Our citizens really deserve to know exactly what they're going to get with a public investment. It is true that mental health issues are a critical component here, and it is important to invest more in our agencies that provide those mental health services. That's absolutely true. It does appear to be a lack of coordination between the agencies and the service providers. There doesn't appear to be a front door, so to speak.
All right. I have to cut you off for time.
Oh, sure.
You have a bad minute, so, thank you. We do have a question from the audience, and I'll start with Jennifer Solomon on this one, too. "Much of the work on housing seems to be invisible. Can you tell us about efforts that are necessary and ongoing that you think will make a big difference in the long run?"
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you repeat it?
Sure. "Much of the work on housing seems to be invisible. Can you tell us about efforts that are necessary and ongoing that you think will make a big difference in the long run?" So perhaps the writer of this question is maybe hoping for more tangible, visible, obvious results as far as addressing housing. That could be affordable housing or accommodating the unhoused, maybe building more middle housing space. So, yeah, it's just kind of what I have on the card here, so hopefully, hopefully that gives you a little more context.
Okay. Well, we'll see. I do support the code amendments that are under consideration that will help increase the housing stock, but it, the folks that have participated in creating those also admit that it could be 20 years before we see the real results of that. And so I hope that we don't just stop and wait for that to happen. I hope that we continue work to build throughout the continuum of housing that we're looking for. The smaller units and the duplexes and the triplexes, it doesn't all need to be single-family residential. And I do applaud council for the work that they have done in the affordable housing arena. They directed $1.9 million of ARPA funds to four local developments, and I think that'll be really important. And those are under construction, and will be, those will be seen and be visible soon. But it is time to really get moving on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That's the minute limit. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. That's fair.
And Jennifer Ye, did you also want me to repeat the question, or?
No, that's okay. But thank you. Yeah, so I think this person who's asked this question, and thank you for asking, is highlighting the importance of how we need more housing. There is definitely housing being built in our communities, but it's not nearly at the scale that we need, right? So it's not, maybe it's not visible right on your street or necessarily in your neighborhood, but there are places in the community where we've been able to build different types. Some of them are affordable housing, some of them are market rate, some of them are, you know, somewhere in the middle. But, you know, the levers like the middle housing code changes that we're discussing are going to make those options easier for people to do. And it's true that we need to do it now. We can't wait, because it takes time to develop financing for a project or get plans for a project, so we have to take action immediately.
All right. Another question here. "Are there issues unique to Ward Four that do not affect the rest of the city in the same way?" And I'll turn to you first, Jennifer Ye.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I appreciate a specific Ward Four question. You know, North Eugene is not separate in some way from the rest of the city, so many of the issues that affect the whole city also affect North Eugene, sometimes maybe in a slightly different way. You know, Ward Four has a really high percentage of renters, a lot more than many other parts of the city. So anything that is involving renter protections or increases in rent is strongly felt in our community, and people have really come out about, to talk to me about this issue and about renter protections because of that, and they're keeping track, they're watching, and they want to see action. So I think that's one thing that is a little more specific to our area than is affecting other parts of Eugene.
Okay. Thank you. And Jennifer Solomon, I'll repeat the question. "Are there issues unique to Ward Four that do not affect the rest of the city in the same way?"
I would be inclined to say that park, park investments don't seem to happen in Ward Four like they happen elsewhere in the city. And considering that a lot of the growth is in our area, and we're paying SDCs for that, I feel like some of those park investments should come back to the ward. And so that, that would be one area. The other area that I feel is a little unique is our transportation congestion on Cover Road. At certain times of the day, it's just really a big challenge, and I'm not sure that any other part of town experiences it quite to that level.
All right. Thank you. Eugene is seen as a high-growth area, but many locals say they're being priced out of their communities by high housing prices. What can be done to ensure affordable housing across Eugene? And Jennifer Solomon, I'll start with you.
Well, affordability is really a supply and demand issue. Well, affordability is really a supply and demand issue. It's too many people competing for a limited amount of housing, so if we can increase the, the supply, the prices will come down. So clearly, we need to build more housing units across the continuum, again, from cottages and bungalows to apartments, duplexes, triplexes. We need a lot of variety. And to this topic of affordability, well, I did, I'm sorry, I already mentioned that, but I have been following the housing implementation pipeline discussion, and according to that, we need to provide more than 6,000 units in five years. And so if we can do that, then that would address housing affordability. But if we're truly transparent and honest about wanting to increase the housing stock, expanding the UGB should be part of that solution. And to that end, I do support expanding the UGB. The city has identified and set aside some very reasonable places that in which we can do that. There just simply isn't enough affordable, buildable land to meet the housing.
You're out of time. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer Yeh, same question, of course. What can be done to ensure affordable housing across Eugene?
Yeah, thank you. You know, this really, it hits me personally, because I think when I moved here so long ago, I could barely afford the house that we bought. If I was having to buy it at the prices today, that, that would not have happened. I would not have been able to be a homeowner, which is very important to me, for my future, for my kids, for other families who are trying to get homeownerships. And so, you know, and that's one of the things that's important to me, is finding ways to be able to increase homeownership, and affordability is a huge part of that. I feel like so much today, we've been talking about housing, 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 right? We need more housing. We, the more housing we have, the, the, the prices will come down, and more people will be able to afford, whether that's buying a house or, or that's renting a place. So housing, housing, housing.
And keep your housing thinking caps on here, because we have a question from the audience. And they say, you both mentioned homelessness as a top concern. What actionable steps have you taken as a city councillor? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Yeh.
Yeah, thank you. So I think we touched about this on an earlier question, but there's, there's a lot of, there are some level, levers that the city, the city can pull. So, you know, supporting emergency housing is one thing, coordinating with our service providers in the community and other nonprofits, you know, working with the county to collect data on our, on folks who are accessing these services, so we can help keep track of them and help get them to services. Those are all important things that we're doing, and we need to continue doing. But we've also acknowledged this isn't only a Eugene problem, so we need to be advocating with our county and our state and our federal government to get the resources that we need, because the, you know, all of us on the West Coast are suffering, and we can't do this alone. This is, this is bigger than us, and so we need to really concentrate on that advocacy and that relationship building at the different levels of government to, to get us what we need.
All right. And Jennifer Solomon, again, what actionable steps have you taken as city councillor as far as addressing homelessness?
Well, in 2003 to 2010, it really, it was only just beginning to be discussed at the city council level, but it was during that time that we recognized a problem, and that is when Kitty Percy, at that time, was mayor, and she convened a blue ribbon panel to look at those issues and provide some recommendations. And so that really was the initial step toward addressing this issue and identifying it and recognizing it and elevating it to, to, to council to, to address. And so we approved, we approved the, the, the panel's recommendations, and then began to craft some strategy, some strategies around that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's a very difficult question to answer in just one minute. School funding is a recurring issue, even after the state legislature approved 9.3 billion last year for Oregon's districts. Starting with you, Jennifer Solomon, do you feel the Eugene schools are receiving sufficient funds? And if not, do you have ideas how more money can be generated for education?
Well, no, the school, schools and school funding really aren't in the purview of the Eugene City Council. The council has its own priorities and jurisdictional issues that they are responsible for. The school district is responsible for their issues. I think if council could do anything, it would be to advocate at the state for more funding. But locally, that, that really doesn't fall under the purview of city council.
Okay, and Jennifer Yeh, your response?
Yeah, so first of all, you know, I have two kids. One of them's made it through the 4J system, and one of them's, one of them's getting there. She's a sophomore at Sheldon, so I, I know our schools need more funding. And I respect the folks who have been elected to our school board to figure out the solutions in order to do that. But the city is a, you know, the, the school boards to Bethel and 4J, they're vital partners with the city on getting stuff done, you know, and the city does support efforts that are, are crucial for, for kids that are going in our system. So our recreation staff does after-school programs, and, you know, we, we have partnerships to maintain fields and parks that are around our schools. So we're both, we're vital partners. We don't make those decisions for the school board, but we're there to support them with what they need. And just personally, as a voter, if something comes across my ballot that's going to give more money to our schools, I'm voting yes.
All right. Police reform and accountability remain on the national consciousness, two years after George Floyd's death. Starting with you, Jennifer Yeh, how do you regard the efficiency and accountability of the Eugene Police Department?
Yeah, I mean, it was a big moment with the Black Lives Matter in our community, and I, I learned an incredible amount during that time and, and going forward. We, we had a choice to make in our community about how we were going to respond, and we, we work on police policy all year long with the Police Commission. It's something I'm honored to do, but it was an opportunity for us to take a little bit of closer look. So while there were a lot of people, they protested outside my house that wanted us to defund the police, we decided to instead defend the police and, and bring folks together with the ad hoc committee that councillor Evans and I put together to talk about the issues and get people at the same table so they could share perspectives and figure out where there are places that we could do better. As a member of the Police Commission, with, you know, citizens and police officers all sitting at the, at the table, we do a really good job of working together, listening to each other's perspectives.
All right, I have to cut you for time there. Thank you. Jennifer Solomon, same question. How do you regard the efficiency and accountability of the Eugene Police?
I feel like the police are extraordinarily efficient, because they have really big staffing challenges right now, so they have to be very efficient. And I, I, I feel like they have been very responsive to council suggestions. They've been responsive to the ad hoc committee's suggestions. They've been responsive to police commission's suggestions for improvement, and they are always willing to come to the table, and they are partners in our community, and they live in our community, and so they absolutely should be supported. And I really do feel like they absolutely reciprocate.
There's a, oh, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay. There's a related question here from the audience, and we'll resume with you, Jennifer Solomon. What do you think about community safety payroll tax, which was imposed on businesses by ordinance, not the vote of the public? I think this is going back to two or three years ago.
Well, I do support the Community Safety Initiative payroll tax, and in fact, I want to commend council for agreeing to put it out to the voters for renewal in a few years. I feel like that was a really great compromise that provides for accountability, and it's essential that we hold fast to the funding commitments, or we will seriously jeopardize the community's support when it comes up for voter approval. A large part of the revenue will help police hire more officers, which will speak to the issue of their responsiveness and challenges that they're currently facing.
All right, and to you, Jennifer Yeh, your thoughts on the community safety payroll tax?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I had the opportunity to serve on the Community Safety Revenue Team, where we were able to talk to our first responders about their needs, analyze the situation that we were in, and then put forward a proposal, which ended up being the payroll tax. It, it's, we needed it. It was necessary. Our first responders, especially our police, and we're not getting the resources that they needed to do the community policing style that we want them to be doing. We want them to have time to talk to neighbors and, and go and meet with kids and have those positive interactions, and that requires people, and people require money. So it, it was a bold decision to make, and I'm, I'm glad that council passed it and moved forward. And it also, you know, one of the great things it's going to do is really bolster the wellbeing. Police wellbeing is so important. We talk about it at Police Commission almost every single meeting. How are our police doing? Are they feeling supported? You know, what more can we do? And this is one way we can do that.
All right. Now, the region is in one of the worst droughts on record, with climate change cited as a factor in the overall dryness. Are there ways the city can reduce its carbon footprint or otherwise alleviate environmental impacts? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Solomon.
Yes. So speaking to the climate, it's real, climate's always changing, and it's global, and we should be part of any statewide, nationwide, or even international conversation, but our investment in time and resources, I really do believe should be within our city boundaries. And I don't believe it's right to implement strategies without considering the economic effects of our citizens. And we should focus on meaningful strategies that make a difference and don't negatively impact residents. One such investment should be in trees. Think about it. I know that our urban forestry department has solid data showing that our canopy is shrinking by about 1% a year. At this rate, the CAP 2.0 goal of a 30% canopy coverage is slipping away. So let's invest now in our living infrastructure that will provide the critical cooling shade, the stormwater control, and the natural removal of carbon from our atmosphere.
All right. I have to cut you off there. That was a minute. All right. And Jennifer Yeh, yes, ways that the city can reduce its carbon footprint or otherwise alleviate environmental impact?
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, we know climate change is real, and, and it's serious. And one of our most effective levers for that is electrification. You know, we can't plant our way out of a global climate problem. It, trees are important, but what we really need is to reduce our dependency on fossil fuels and take advantage of the hydroelectric power that we have in our area. So if we want to see the effects, we see the effects of climate change, like ourselves personally, right? We've all seen the wildfires that happened over the summer, so it's very real here in Eugene. But, and we, we can't wait. We can't make excuses, we can't kick the can down the road. We have to take action right now, and that's what council's doing. We're taking action to electrify our city in, in a transition that makes sense and brings everyone along, and, and we're going to make progress. We are a leader in this nation, and we should be proud of that.
All right. And this is kind of related to the environment as well. Our region is seeing intensely hotter and numerous wildfires, not to mention that we're in the Cascadia Subduction Zone. What measures do you think are necessary for the city to take or create to ensure an adequate response to disaster? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Yeh.
Yeah, we kind of talked about this a little bit with the pandemic. You know, it's, it goes back to resiliency, right? You know, not just the city, but our regional, regional partners and businesses and individuals. We all need to get prepared so that when something happens, we can have the basic needs to, to get us through until more help can come, but also so we can be prepared with that, those plans and those processes, that so the city can reach people who, who are in need. And, and those are going on all throughout, not just the city, but other organizations, where they're figuring out how we can make sure our structures are, are earthquake-ready, so that if something happens, people aren't harmed, they can get out. And then those emergency, those buildings where we really need them to be working throughout a crisis, they're at a level where they're going to be safe to habitate. So that's just one example of, of some of the stuff that, and that's really work, especially I've been working metropolitan ways, whoa.
Hannah, you're out of time. Again, a lot to pack in the 60 seconds right there. Jennifer Solomon, repeat the question here. What measures do you think are necessary for the city to take or create to ensure an adequate response to disasters, whether it's a wildfire or the, or a major earthquake?
Well, two things come to mind. For wildfire, it is really working with the homeowners, particularly in the South Eugene neighborhoods and in the hillsides, to make sure that they have defensible space around their homes, and cutting those trees and just making sure that they're, that to help, that would help buffer their homes from an intense wildfire, because anything that comes through here is going to be really intense. There's a lot of trees out there, and they're very dry. The second issue was, would be related to just transportation and access to the, the hills. I know that when I've talked with first responders, that is a key concern of theirs, is getting to the folks that need that support and help that are in the South Hills. Those streets are narrow, they are, they, they wind around, they're hard to get to, and then, of course, you would have competing traffic trying to get out of the area. So it's, that's just, I think there's some room for work there.
All right. And a quick note, too, we are, we have a great problem here. We are inundated with questions, both pre, pre, pre-prepared questions, those from the audience, we will try to get to as many as possible in the remaining time that we have left. I assume both candidates have respective campaign pages and emails that constituents can send questions to if we do not get to them in today's forum. Next question regards the fact that the city of Eugene lacks a formal city hall, with many offices and officials leasing space at an LCC downtown campus building. Do you support the construction of a city hall, and if so, how should it be funded? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Solomon.
Wow. Yes, that, we were dealing with that issue the last time I was on council. I am not yet ready to build a new city hall. I'm curious about the opportunities that the eWeb building offers. I would need to explore those. I know that they have been discussed before. And then I, I do think it is interesting and that the city of Eugene is currently using a lot of space in the LCC building downtown. They made a significant investment in that building. It, it works, and if it works for the city, it just seems like that would be a great place for them to, a great place for them to modify and, and use as their own. I don't see the need to really build a new city hall.
All right. And Jennifer Yeh, do you support the construction of a city hall for the city of Eugene and its officials? And if so, how would it be funded?
Yeah, thanks. We've been dealing with this for a long time in our community, right? I can remember going to meetings when I was still a neighborhood leader about different city hall options. And, you know, someday we'll build a city hall. It's, but what's really important is that we have a place where citizens and, and, and city staff can, can connect, and where things can get done and work can be accomplished, and we're doing that right now, down at the LCC, you know, downtown station, but also in other buildings, right, that are, that are in the same area. So it's working, we're doing it. So what's really, what we really need to really concentrate on is figuring out how we're going to sustain that, right? If, are we going to stay in the LCC building? Are we going to scatter our, our, our services out to other buildings? But we're, you know, the city is going to get together, we're going to plan, we can do this. We know how to get work done, and we'll figure it out. I do not support the eWeb building, because I want to see the Eugene Science Center in there. I think that'd be fantastic.
And that's time. Public safety has been a recurring issue in the downtown area for several years, with incidents ranging from vandalism to brawls outside taverns and bars. What policies or measures do you think could be effective in addressing this problem? And we'll start with you, Jennifer Yeh.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, our downtown has had a tough time, and I certainly appreciate all of the businesses and the residents who have continued to go down there and continue to get work done and, and run their businesses and, but, you know, one of our best ways to, to help with that is our community safety tax, getting the police the resources and other service providers, the resources they need to address this problem. There's really two angles we can go at this. We can, we can make sure we have the enforcement we need and the preventative services we need. And then for those incidents that are involving our homeless population, that many people are really concerned about, we also need to make sure that our support systems for those people are also getting the resources they need, because we can't enforce our way out of homelessness, right? We can only support people out of homelessness. We can only support people out of homelessness. And so those are the two angles that I want us to do, and that's what I've been doing on council and will continue to do.
All right, and same question to you, Jennifer Solomon. What policies or measures do you think could be effective in addressing the public safety issue in the downtown areas?
Well, as I mentioned before, it is hands-down the number-one issue of concern for voters. It fully affects our livability, as you can see downtown. People don't feel safe walking the streets of downtown. And so I also agree that we need a greater police presence in the downtown to help deter those activities that are frightening people. I also feel that, considering how much we've invested in our downtown through public art and public spaces and even the farmer's market, that we really should be better stewards of those investments and make them feel safer for the community to come down and enjoy and really enjoy that investment and feel safe doing it.
And here's a good follow-up question that we received from the audience. We'll start with you, Jennifer Solomon. Shouldn't city and county, I assume officials or government, pass resolutions to push for federal relief to provide money and social services to end poverty and homelessness? In short, how is the city addressing the need to end poverty in Eugene? And again, we'll start with you, Jennifer Solomon.
Well, I think the best way to end poverty in Eugene is to have more jobs and attract employers to the area, and that would lift all boats, if all people could, all people that would be employed, yes, they would improve, they wouldn't be living in poverty. And so I think that would be really essential to improving.
All right. Oh, were you finished?
No, I'm sorry, I just sort of forgot the question, so it's okay, sorry.
Okay. Turning to you, Jennifer, do you want me to repeat the question?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Okay. So essentially, in short, how is the city addressing the need to end poverty in Eugene? And that was also phrased with the idea of maybe pushing for federal relief to provide money and social services.
Yeah, so first of all, absolutely, we need to advocate with our state and federal partner, partner governments, that this is not something we can solve alone. We need their help, and not just us, the whole West Coast needs the federal government to step up and give us the support, and the nonprofits and the social service providers, like everyone, the support that they need. But also, you know, poverty is a complicated issue, and a lot of times it boils down to an equity issue, right? We know that the folks in our community who are suffering the most also don't have the voice in government that some of us who are more privileged have. So, you know, getting more jobs is essential, making sure the jobs that we have actually pay livable wages is essential, and making sure that everyone in our community, no matter their background or where they're coming from, is, has a voice in this decision-making, I think can raise all of us up into a better place.
All right, and that is time. We have time for just a couple more questions here before we wrap up the program. Again, the candidates, I believe, do have candidate websites and Facebook pages, which constituents can send if we do not get to your question today. The World Track and Field Championships will be held this summer in Eugene, which promises to be a huge event. Do you think the city is ready for the influx of visitors and international attention this will bring? What are some long-term positive or negative impacts the event could have in our community? We'll start with Jennifer Yeh.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it's exciting, right? Having a world stage for our, you know, small community compared to where this event has gone in the past. You know, we've done big events before. This is certainly at a different level, but we're not doing it alone. There's a whole partnership of organizations throughout the state of Oregon that are, that are helping and working with city staff to make sure that we're ready when this gets here. And it's, it's going to be a great moment, I think, for us to highlight, you know, what is special about Eugene, what we do well, how we're addressing our issues, because every, you know, every place has problems and issues they're addressing, but, you know, I think we can show that we're stepping up in unique ways in our community, and I, and hopefully we can be an example in some of those places where we shine. And it's going to bring also, as a side benefit, lots of money to our community, which is great.
All right, and Jennifer Solomon, same question to you regarding the World Track and Field Championships and its effects on the city of Eugene and surrounding community.
Yes, the impact will really be more of a regional nature, and I, it is very exciting, and there's huge opportunity, and I think we don't even realize yet what all the possible impacts could be, the good impacts. And, but I, speaking to the regional effect, I think that, again, it will, it will help the surrounding communities and draw more attention to our area, and again, just lifting the whole area up economically and as a model of what could happen. It will be a very exciting time for our community.
And I just realized, too, that we had mentioned closing statements by the candidates. Do we still have time for even a couple minutes from the candidates? Well, that concludes our Q and A portion of this program. I would like to thank Jennifer Solomon, the challenger, and Jennifer Yeh, the incumbent councilwoman, for Ward 4. And again, thank you to everyone who texted or sent in questions for this debate. I now return the forum to Kitty Percy.
Thank you. This has been our March 18th, 2022 program, Eugene City Council Ward 4 Kennedy Forum. Before we thank our speakers today, I'd like to recognize our diamond sponsors. Kaiser Permanente exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the community we serve. More information is available at www.kp.org. University of Oregon has helped Oregonians question critically, think logically, reason effectively, communicate clearly, act creatively, and live ethically since 1876. Get more information at uoregon.edu. Peace Health has been proud to serve Eugene, Lane County, and beyond as your hometown healthcare partner for more than 80 years. The Peace Health mission is to keep you and your family healthy. Learn more at peacehealth.org. Lane Community College transforms lives through learning. LCC provides comprehensive, accessible, high-quality educational opportunities that promote student success. For more information, visit laneccc.edu. We are grateful for generous support from the city of Eugene and from Lane County, and I would like to acknowledge our Sapphire sponsor, Summit Bank. Support for the City Club comes from Summit Bank, your local community bank. An independent community bank headquartered in Eugene, Summit Bank serves businesses and professionals in Eugene Springfield and central Oregon communities. For more information, visit sbkobank. Today's goal sponsors are Ferguson Fife Dentistry of Eugene Smiles and Love's Cobb. Thank you to our in-kind sponsors, KRVM, 91.9 Radio, PAC Info, and Simplified Computing LLC, Dotson's Photography. And a special thank you to Public Radio Station KLCC FM 89.7 for airing City Club programs on Mondays at 7:00. Our programs are always available on our YouTube channel, your Facebook page, and our podcast. We invite everyone, members and non-members, to participate in our programs, in person at our new venue, the First United Methodist Church at 1376 Olive, or by live stream on our YouTube page. More information is on our website, cityclubofeugene.org. Now, next week, we're going to have a conversation about barriers to Latino engagement in Laney County government, so please join us again on March 25th. More details and information about future programs can be found online at the City Club's website, cityclubofeugene.org. And I guess my little comment for the day will be, I live in downtown, and I find it a really great place to be. I would like to thank today's speakers, Jennifer Solomon and City Councillor Jennifer Yeh, for a great program. This includes, concludes today's program. Go out in the sunshine and enjoy your day. Thank you.[1793.11][1793.11]